For all of our citizens, amen.
Amen.
What the leaders defy, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We have special presentations. The first one is her story and her heritage, International Community Festival and Concert. I believe you have a few people here to present that. Bernice and Neil, great. Come on up the podium and again, tell everybody in the audience who you are and tell us about this special event.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bernice Hamilton and I am the president of the board at the YWCA Hamilton.
I'm Neil Cohen. I'm the president of the board of the YWCA.
So we're here to tell you about a fantastic event that will be a first for this city. It's called Her Story and Heritage. It is about celebrating local women who have done phenomenal things, whether it's in education or medicine, or to tell you about what the work of the YWCA entails and also to tell you about, again, this free event that is open to the public. It's an all-day event. It's going to be a Champion Mill Conference Center from 11 to 5:00 and it will also feature a guest artist.
My turn?
Your turn.
Oh boy. She gave me the easy part. So this festival is an intercultural event, as Bernice said, and this is something that'll be unique to Hamilton. I know a lot of people come to these meetings and talk about how unique their particular thing is. Well, this truly is unique. It's something that's never been done before and it's something that's never been done by the YW particularly. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to honor the interdisciplinary opportunities that people have in our community and the diversity that we have in our community. So what we're going to do is have a festival all day long that will be free to the public, that includes transportation all over the community to bring people to this festival who don't have transportation. And we'll be able to go through an event space that will have a lot of vendors for food, that will have a lot of vendors for merchandise, all vetted for their diversity, as well as entertainment continuously through the day by groups also that have been vetted for diversity. So we're trying to showcase to the whole community what our community truly entails and what is a part of who we are. So you can see all the different opportunities up there. One of the biggest things that we have going is a children's area that'll be a big space and there'll be events happening all day long and opportunities for children to participate in all kinds of activities. So we're really hopeful that we'll have the kinds of crowds that we're expecting and that this will be an event that truly will be unique and will be an engaging event for the whole community. The other side of this is in the evening and in the evening, we're going to have a concert and the international group En Vogue is coming to Hamilton to do a concert from 9:00 to 10:00 on Saturday night. This is a ticketed event and there'll also be an opportunity to honor the 10 women of achievement who will be honored there throughout the day as well as in the evening. This will be a decorated event for those people and for those who are still around, hopefully are going to come and participate in the event. We also have the Cunningham sisters who are going to perform. Most of you know who they are. They're local people who were on The Voice about four or five years ago. And then Margaret Mitchell, who is the national CEO of the YWCA, is also going to be here to give a little bit of a talk, just a short talk, and then introduce the band En Vogue. The ticketed event is available to anybody on our website. There's a code on there. All you have to do is click on the code. You can get a ticket for the event. It'll be pretty intimate because there aren't a lot of seats in the ballroom there and it should be a great time and a lot of fun. The event also, the concert would also have food available for those who buy tickets and there'll be cash bars available for those who choose to drink. So that's what's going on. It's Saturday, March the 8th, which is just a week from this Saturday. We've been working tirelessly to make this the kind of event that I just described and we would love to see you all there, not just for the day, but also for the evening and supporting not only the YW, but this whole diverse community that we love. Are there any questions that anybody might have?
So what's going on earlier today before the concert is free to the public, is that right?
Correct. Free to the public and also free rides to get there. So we're trying to enlighten the whole community of the ability to get there. There's a bus transportation provided by Community First Solutions. It will be stopping at several different stops, including Fairfield and Middletown. So this is a county organization, a county-wide organization, even though we're centered in Hamilton and we want the whole county to feel included.
Will the 10 women be recognized prior to the music at night?
Yeah.
Yes. The 10 women will also be recognized at a ceremony that I believe will start at 1:00, that afternoon. So 1:00 in the afternoon and then again in the evening.
Great. And they'll be recognized not only visually and vocally, that we also have a video that will be shown all day long about their achievements and they will also be recognized by the clothing that they're wearing. They'll have a sash that will recognize them so people can see who they are as they're walking around the venue and also in the evening they'll be getting a more substantial award as well.
Any questions or comments?
Great.
So we hope that this will be an event that not just will be this year, but will have ongoing opportunities. And all the volunteers and all the people who have helped provide the opportunity to do this, we want to make sure that you recognize them as well. They'll all be wearing T-shirts that show the YW. They'll be scattered around the whole venue working to make sure that everybody has the experience that they hope to have. So please, if you're there, please thank them as well for their effort because they're working hard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, next we have John Bowie Retirement Proclamation. John, you want to come on up here? How many people did you bring with you tonight that you worked with?
A whole wide world. And actually, everyone's in this room. How you doing, ma'am?
I'm doing fine. Hi, John. If there weren't so many people, I'd have them come up here. But you do have a lot of people out there. All right. John Bowie, you know, they could make a movie about your life, but I think it should be a documentary.
Yes, it's coming.
Drop the microphone. I mean, how you live, how you learn, and how you've been a public servant would be a documentary. It's what we would all be able to learn from. Now, how you live would be like chapters of living in Vietnam. Living there, escaping there basically, going to the Philippines, winding up in Hamilton, Ohio.
Correct. It's a long story. Hopefully, the mayor will give me about three hours.
You know, the chapters about your learning is amazing because you spoke very little English when you got to Hamilton, Ohio.
Correct.
But you got yourself into Hamilton High School. You graduated with honors.
Yes.
And then also Miami University.
Correct.
So this is a man who's learned all his life and really you've been like a survivor. I mean, it's amazing, the things that you have seen, done to get you where you're here today.
This is all God's work.
I believe that.
I could not plan for how it turned out.
Well, she had a second microphone. This would be a dual thing. You got a second one? He's talking a lot more than I thought he was, which is good. I've always enjoyed my conversations with John. I'll just tell you that right now. And there'd be also chapters about how to be a great public servant in the utility field, but also just being a great public servant because you really do get it. I had the opportunity to get to know John, especially when we brought Civics Day students, these high school students, to the water plant. And he'd give these great tours because he was proud of what he was doing and he did what he did very great. I mean, the water tastes great and it was one of the cleanest probably water facilities in the United States and he was just so proud and he had a passion for Hamilton, Ohio.
It's not just me that doing that work. The whole team at the water plant, from maintenance through operators to our directors that support the work that we do at the plants. I just happen to be the leader of that group and contribute what I know about that facility. But the work is done by a lot of people and not just me.
Well, you got teammates. That makes her a great, great city. Now, at the end, we're going to have all those people come up here and get a picture with you. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to read this now. Put down my notes here for a second. All right. "Off to the Mayor Proclamation. Whereas Hamilton City Council and City Administration would like to give recognition and show appreciation to John Huang Bowie for his work, passion, and dedication to serving the people of Hamilton, Ohio. Whereas John had an early education in water treatment in Vietnam, when he would help his mother collect water from a nearby river to fill a 55-gallon drum, which he would stir with a large crystal. The crystal would allow the colloidal solids to settle at the bottom of the drum, which would allow the water to be then used, washing, cleansing, and the like. Whereas John later enrolled at Hamilton High School, initially barely able to speak English, but graduated with honors. He later studied chemistry at Miami University and learned that the crystal he used in Vietnam was alum?"
Alum.
"Alum, okay? And it was his destiny to become a water professional for the city of Hamilton."
Yes. It was an evening class and I was just walking around during breaks and saw Hamilton post a flyer for a laboratory technician. It was even, not even called a chemist position back then. It was just laboratory technician. And being a chemistry major, I thought it sounded like fun. So I signed up and took the test and got high score, was invited in for the interview. And I told the laboratory supervisor back then that I have another year to go. If I work part-time, I'm willing, but if not, I can't. So I was passed. Another one was hired for the position. A year later, she called me up and said, "John, you've told me that you have another year to go." And we know that Miami's student, just graduate, the job is job you wanted. And at the time, I was still waiting for P&amp;G, Eli Lilly, some of the big companies that I sent my resume to. I said, "Well, it's temporary. My wife about to have our first son." He was born on June 28, 92, and I started July 6, 92.
Like I said, this would be a heck of a documentary and maybe a movie too.
And it's been temporary for almost 33 years.
Oh, man. All right. And whereas John did start his career in the city of Hamilton in 1992 as a chemist. 2003, he began a steady track of earned promotions, serving as the Assistant Superintendent for Water Production, Superintendent for Water Production, Director of Underground Utilities, and has most recently served as the manager of the water production and water reclamation teams. And whereas John's expertise on chlorine dioxide generation as a means of drinking water disinfection, to maintaining equipment to performing analytical analysis of samples, to ensuring top performance of the chlorine dioxide generators, has been shared with many consultants and utilities, including representatives from the Ohio EPA and the United States EPA. Whereas John earned a Class III Water Supply Operator License and a Class III operator, excuse me, wastewater operator license from the Ohio EPA and serves as a board member of the Groundwater Consortium. And I'm sure you've been a consultant many times. People have approached you for your expertise and your advice.
Yes, I have many utilities that use chlorine dioxide. Dow South in Florida came up here and learned our process, the testing procedure. We are one of the only two utilities in the entire state of Ohio that use chlorine dioxide. We are the largest one, started in 72. The other utility is Mount Vernon up north. They start using chlorine dioxide in 84, much smaller system compared to ours.
Now, I mean, you've cared about water and involved with water all your life, basically.
It's turned out to be that way. Didn't plan to, but God wanted me to do that, so here I am.
Whereas through the City of Hamilton Bottled Water Program, John directly facilitated the City of Hamilton's support for nonprofit community events and national disaster recovery efforts. So with your leadership and your team's hard work, when people are in need, you've sent those bottled water to probably any national disaster that you could think of, we have probably sent water.
Yes, we send water to as far as Japan, Mathieu 25, for many disaster relief around our countries, you know, down south, Kentucky, Texas, and even recently to California for the wildfire recently.
Kind of wish it had your picture on it, you know? That would be kind of cool. But whereas, under John's leadership, the city of Hamilton has been recognized by the American Water Works Association for their high-quality drinking water. The city of Hamilton has, on multiple occasions, won the award for the World's Best Tasting Tap Water at the Berkeley Springs International Tasting Competition, basically the Water Olympics.
Yes.
And whereas through a lifetime commitment to learning and to public service, John has provided clean and accessible water to numerous individuals in Vietnam, the city of Hamilton, Butler County, and through a bottled water program throughout the United States. Therefore, I Pat Moeller, Mayor of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, members of Hamilton City Council hereby recognize John Huang Bowie for his service to the city of Hamilton for 33 years, congratulating him on his retirement and wishing the best in his future endeavors.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, what else did you want to say? Because I'm going to give you this. It's like open mic time, but it's not three-hour time.
All right, let's get the popcorn started. Two hours?
No, sir. No, sir.
Well, when I started with the city, I didn't need glasses, but now I do. So I just want to say thanks to a few people. Run out memory space so I can cram it all in, so I have to type it out. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this recognition. I have greatly enjoyed my time at the city of Hamilton and I appreciate the opportunities I have had to work with such a talented and dedicated team. I am proud of the contributions I have made to the city, specifically the Water Production Division during my tenure. And I am confident that the Water Production Division will continue to thrive in the future. I want to thank my brother, Tim, for having the courage to plan and escape, to find freedom after the Vietnam War. He got a crew together and built a boat, not longer than maybe 20 feet, eight feet wide. Pack with 44 people on the boat and there we went. 30 days later, we got rescued. I want to thank the Filipino people, the captain of the patrol ship and his crews for rescuing us. Otherwise, none of us would have survived for another day or two. I want to thank Mark and his wife, Yuna Cornelius, and his family for sponsoring us and bringing us here, Hamilton, Ohio. Mark is my brother's military friend during the Vietnam War. So when we got to the Philippines, they got connected and that's how they got together and he offered his sponsoring for us to come here. I want to thank my ninth-grade teacher, Mr. Alfreds, my high school chemistry teachers, Mr. St. John and Mrs. King, my algebra teacher, Mr. Downs. Believe it or not, when I got here, I was 16 years old, only finished fifth grade, didn't speak any English, and entered ninth grade right away, not able to speak the language, only finished fifth grade, couldn't add or subtract fractions, and ended up tutoring calculus at Miami University when I started there. So it's either sink or swim, swim or sink, you know? So I decided to swim and study hard all four years of high school. My algebra teacher, Mr. Downs, my English teacher, Mrs. Sine, and my computer teacher, Mr. Ruth. Good thing my brother didn't allow me to continue with computer. I would have been a hacker probably. Yeah. He wanted me to go to med school, but after first semester, I just couldn't handle biology with too many terms that's about this long. Can't pronounce it, can't remember. So I negotiated with him, allowed me to finish in chemistry. When he decided to go to med school, I will take a few biology class and then continue on to take the MCAT and go to med school. But I graduated with a chemistry degree and I told him, "That's it. Eight or nine years of school, that's enough. I need to go to work." So in my computer class, I wrote a program in early day, you know, with mainframe computer with a monochrome monitor with the username and password login. That's it. That's all on the screen. I wrote a program to simulate that screen so people unsuspectively come in and sit down and log in. It would track their login information and then reset the computer and allow them to log back in and they didn't think twice that that information had been collected. But I didn't do anything with that program. I showed it to my computer teacher and he said, "Clever, but why did you do that?" And I said, "Well..." And many other teachers at Wilson Junior High and Hamilton High School for being patient and helping me learn during my first couple of years in the United States. I want to thank Charlie and Susan Pedro for helping our family adjust to the new life in the United States. They have such a big heart. You know, Charlie Pedro, Judge Pedro. I want to thank Dave and Mary Ann Keller for helping my nephew and me with homework. Dave used to come to our apartment twice a week, pick me up and my nephew take us to his house. My nephew would stay in the kitchen with Dave's wife and Dave would took me down to the basement with him a couple hours studying English, doing homework twice a week. So when I started here with the city, Jane Winkler was the laboratory supervisor. I credit Jane Winkler for my success. In the lab, a lot of people learned the things that I did that I didn't even know how they knew about me. And then Greg Petritas, former Water Production Superintendent, who hired me in as his assistant. Those two empowered me and gave me a chance to contribute my talents to the city and I've been blessed. I would like to thank all of the departments that I interact with throughout my career here, the city, our electric department, streets and sewers division, the fleet maintenance division, and gas and water distribution division for their assistance and support over the years. Many times I call on them during emergency, they would be there. When we have power outage, Dennis Farding was one of my first people I call. He'll always there, respond to the needs of water production. I've learned a great deal from all of you and I am grateful for the opportunities the city of Hamilton has given me to grow and develop professionally. I wish all of you and the city of Hamilton, especially the Water Production Division, all the employees there, all the best in the future. As I venture into the next chapter of my life, I'm hopeful that it will be a relaxing one. It is a small world. I'm sure our paths will cross once again. And I look forward to the opportunity of future connections. Thank you.
That'll happen. If you work with John, can you come up here for a picture real quick? If you work with John or your family, come on up here if you will, please.
So Jay and Derek will be the team that will lead the Water Production Division moving forward. This is Derek Ward. This is Jay Mosley, who will be the superintendent for production. This is Doug Swing, former operator. This is Doug Swing, a former operator at the water plants. He retired about fifteen, twenty?
Two thousand and five.
Yeah, so twenty years or so ago. He's now back at the plant or been back at the plant since 2010 bottle, the drinking water that we have here, the bottled water. Sharon, our Richie, our administrative assistant, she takes her up to office and make sure that we all stay in line. Kim Kirsch, our former administrative assistant, she retired four, five years, three? Time flies. Ron Eggs, our maintenance worker at, at water production. How long have you been with water production now, Ron? Twelve years? Yeah. And Chung Nguyen, he's a mechanical engineer in our infrastructure department. He support us with projects at the plants for both water and wastewater, actually.
We'll need a picture of you on this one. Take the microphone. All right. Just might take a pretty picture of this team up here. All right.
Thank you, John.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations, John. Good to see you. Congratulations. Thank you. God bless you, John.
Congratulations.
Heavy water.
All right, that takes care of special presentations. We now go to audiences, citizens, individuals who wish to speak, wish to make comments, may speak during this part of the agenda or may reserve the right to speak specifically when the item is up for vote on the council floor. Individuals who intend to address the city council are required to sign the blue public speaking book that was on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Okay. All right. Are you ready to go on that? Kamar Miko, if I mispronounced your name, I apologize. Please come on up here, give us your name and your address, please. While you wish to speak with us.
Yes. Good evening. Um, my, oh, my address is 55 Northeast Street, Hamilton, Ohio. That is Family Promise of Butler County. I am the new executive director there and I am just here to introduce myself as being a new part of Hamilton, Ohio. Family Promise of Butler County is an emergency shelter. Our mission is to empower families that are experiencing homelessness and helping them achieve independence through a continuum of services. And so, of course, we are throughout Butler County, but we have been located in Hamilton, Ohio since 2016 from the inception of the program. And so I just wanted to come forth and meet and say hello to everyone and let everyone know that we are here and we are hoping to be a major part of eradicating homelessness throughout Butler County.
Thank you and thank you for introducing yourself. It's a very well-respected agency.
Thank you.
I think everybody up here knows that. Neil Cohen already spoke about her story unless he wants to come back. Okay. Ryan Herring. On up, Ryan, give us your name and your address up here when you get to the podium.
Hello. My name's Ryan Herring. I'm at 944 One Avenue. So, cone, notes here, I'm sorry. So coming to talk about, appreciate redoing of the Corwin Avenue. Unfortunate results of that is it's turned into a I-75 maybe. It's, yeah, it's very, very, I mean, running stop signs all the way from one end to the other. And, you know, watched the lady, she was really close to getting hit by a vehicle running stop signs. She counted on, was counting on the stop signs, but luckily she hesitated and I believe it was the same exact lady that had trouble with her stroller. She was pushing her child in the stroller. There's a square between Putnam and Van Hook of sidewalk that's had a cone sitting in the middle of it for a couple of years now. It's just, it's an empty, empty spot. Not sure if out of concrete or whatever, I would, I would hope that we had, had concrete available. But just to see her struggling to get through there and, you know, instead of going through with them, it was through the mud and stuff. It was kind of irritating me, you know, pay your taxes, pay your taxes and you see something like that. Another thing I wanted to bring up is, there's a few few narrow spots on Zimmerman, which is, I mean, it happens. But right at the narrow spots, there's pretty good sized potholes where you have to hit the brakes so that you don't hit it. It to go around it once the vehicles that are oncoming are out of the way. And see, train issues just yesterday, the train was stopped for a couple hours. And people had to, people were going the wrong way through the tunnel again and me, myself, I went down to Bishop and went through the neighborhood there, which is the best thing to do. But I don't know if you, I see some heads shaking there or made aware of the situation, but it was literally over two or three hours. It was closed. And, I mean, I don't understand, I mean, I understand train, you know, trains gotta be switched, cars and stuff, but I don't know how long, how long does it really take? But uh, just the couple, the one, the one, like the one pothole, I have a side note here, it's a, it's a small crater. When you, you hit something like that and you, you know, it can destroy your whole tire, you know, when it's my tires on my car, $400 if it rinses, does damage the rim, it's even more than that. But uh, that's, that's about, about all I have.
Okay. Senator, can we have one of those speed?
Sure. First, I'd just like to address the train issue. That particular train issue, and there are many that we actively monitor, but that particular issue had to do with a, a mechanical failure on, on the engine itself. And so the railroad had to bring in an engine from outside the area. And I know that, that took a long time, but we were in contact with them during that process. But what I would like to do is have Aaron Hufford on city staff, if he could just gather some more information with you and we'll follow up on your concerns.
Well, that'd have to be, I know I'm not the only one that was irritated. I mean, several people, you know. I mean, I'll go around it, don't bother, not that, but I mean, sitting there waiting and waiting and waiting and then all of a sudden it stops and you're like, okay. How long's it gonna be stopped? And I mean, it's.
There might be two different types of true stopping. One is mechanical, which may take a little while. The other one could be for no good reason at all.
But I did, I did work when I worked down at a, at a contractor down at Procter and Gamble years ago and I witnessed that they do, you know, switch the cars around and which does take time.
This was a true mechanical failure, so, but either way, it's still frustrating. It still, it still causes a lot of consternation and we're aware of that and we pass that on to the railroad. But again, there's, I know you mentioned several different issues. We just want to make sure we follow up with you on those, so. Aaron will meet you out in the lobby and we'll gather some more information with you.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Rob Weil and Nancy Weil.
Hello. Rob Weil, 54 Jeremy Court. I actually do much better just kind of winging it, but I'm gonna try to read this, so we'll see how this goes. We are here tonight, first of all, to say thank you to you all for the support that you gave the Safe Streets for All grant application almost a year ago. And because of your support and the outstanding efforts by Liz and Alan and engineering and the entire city team, as you know, we received $9.7 million. It's a good start. At the Safe Streets for All meeting at the end of January, I got a little wound up and started to express some opinions and Mayor Mueller said, you need to come and talk to council. So when I'm finished, you can either thank or blame Pat for me being here.
Don't blame Rob.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that now, but so it is really apropos that we come up after Ryan just spoke about the safety feeling on Corwin Avenue because that's what we're here to talk about, is safety. There exists a fragile bond of trust between the city and its residents that's held together by an unspoken covenant, and that covenant is, the city will keep you safe. This safety for residents is clearly understood in the fine services that we extend through police and fire and EMS, but it's much broader than that. It includes the promise of safety and reliable utilities, safety and security through economic development. That's for you, Jody, giving you a plug out there. And, and that families can prosper here and also the safety that residents feel when riding in their car, walking on the streets, or riding their bike or scooter, or whatever modality. Again, the city does a great job with that covenant, except when it comes down to how we feel when we're in our cars, when we're walking on the streets, when we're riding our bikes, or imagine me on a scooter, when people are on scooters. The city is currently last per capita in Ohio for the car bike accident rate and third from last in Ohio for the vehicle pedestrian accident rate. In a five-year period, I think that ended in 22, there were 135 pedestrians that were hit by cars, 76 cyclists that were hit by cars. That translates, on average, over five years to a pedestrian or a cyclist being hit by a car every nine days. I mean, think about that for a minute. Every nine days, somebody in our city on a bike or on foot gets hit by a car. So recently I was talking and gathering information from Hamilton businesses and Hamilton residents about what they thought it felt like to, you know, to do business in town and, and have a walkable community. And two of the business owners, complete separate conversation, one was a restaurateur and one was retail, both on Main Street, said it's, it's really interesting to them that as well as the city is doing and as much as the city has prospered, there isn't more foot traffic. Why isn't there more, more foot traffic? Well, the more I talk with people, the leading deterrent to them interacting in the city through on bike or on foot is the feeling of safety. People cited, as the gentleman just did, on Corwin Avenue, you know, people don't like to walk when they're exposed to speeding vehicles, vehicles running red lights and aggressive drivers as they, as they try to walk to businesses or even walk home from work. Safety is such an integral part of creating that sense of place, that inner connection that people search for when they choose where they want to live, where they want to raise their families. Hamilton once branded itself, you may recall, as the safe capital of the world because of the fact that Mosler was here, Diebold was here, Arring Hall, Marvin, McNeil Urban, a lot of safe companies were here. So they branded themselves the safe capital of the world. Imagine Ree Brown branding Hamilton now as the safe capital because if we can uphold those covenants, we can truly become the safest city that we can be. The $9.7 million which the city received is a good start, but it's just a start. When I hear Liz Hayden talk about the fact that to do round four correctly is 35, 40, maybe, maybe more, millions of dollars just to do round four correctly. We have to do more, but the great news is we have a generational opportunity. No matter where you might be on the political spectrum, I think we can all agree that change is coming from Washington DC and the access to federal funding for cities will be reduced. It's just reality. This current moment in time where we can, if you will, carpe diem is fleeting. And the competition for federal funds in the future will be even more intense. We need a substantial investment in safety. Incremental will not get us there. And in order to make a substantial investment, this has to be federal money. So that's the first five minutes of Rob's speech, but, so why am I here? I'm here to ask you to seize this moment and pursue aggressively another large round of Safe Streets for All grant before this money disappears. There is currently $2 billion left. At this point untouched, there is a, I forget what federal opportunity of, anyway, that they're, they said in February, they're still planning on announcing the opportunity to apply for the next round of, of money. So the two challenges we face in going after another round are we need to show substantial progress on the first round that we just got. That means we need to start now. And with all due respect, not 26 or not 27, we need to start now. And then the, the second obstacle is what I am terming the dreaded M word, the match. Where will the matching funds come from, the 20% to go after another federal large grant? I believe the city has an excellent team that can expedite the first round. They need you and the administration to direct them to expedite the first round. And I also believe the creative solutions exist on finding this match. Other Ohio cities have done this. Columbus recently directed $12 million toward their master active transportation plan. Lucas County has competed, excuse me, committed 24 million. The Greater Ohio Policy Center recently outlined the efforts of several of our peer cities. Mansfield.
Let me wrap this up a little bit.
I'm, I'm working, I swear, I'm gonna take some of Nancy's five minutes. Mansfield used 13 layers to get $16 million. Lorraine used six layers to get 11 million. And Youngstown used seven layers to get $27 million. Now, think about that for a minute. Youngstown, Ohio, 60,000 people is investing 27 million to make their seats, their streets safe. The common thread in all of it is leadership from council and management to go after those grants. We've researched the grants. You can use Ohio-based grants. They're out there. Daniel, you were in the call the other day with Tri-State Trails. There are opportunities there. And I also took the time to read all 412 pages of your 2023 CAFER document and the 2024 unaudited city financial document. There are, there are opportunities there. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump forward then, Pat. So I have three asks for you. I have three asks. The first is.
You help us with them.
The first is that city council and administration come together around a yes and commit to going after another round of these funds as soon as possible because the opportunity will be fleeting. The second is that we are able to meet and present what we have been researching and what we found out and what we've discovered as ideas, internal and external, to build that match. The third is that both of these items happen quickly because two months from now is two months too late. Who knows what Washington will decide is a priority while cities struggle for investment dollars. So I'll leave you with this quote. You know that I like quotes, but it's from Maya Angelou. And it says, "People will forget what you said. People will forget what you've done, but people will never forget how you made them feel." I believe that all of you, to a person, want to make residents in Hamilton, Ohio feel safe. That's my. That's my eight minutes.
Rob, that's very well stated, and you definitely have a pulse on what's needed and also a pulse on what's going on potentially through a different administration. And you've caused us, I know me, to think a lot about this, and that's why I asked you to come to council, is because you've raised some issues that need to be looked at and soon as to what we do, what we can do, what we should do.
And again, Mayor, if I may, just the opportunity to show where these grants exist, where the internal opportunities exist, have a conversation about what that match basket, if you will, internal revolving loan fund looks like for the city and what these other cities have done.
Thank you.
I'm gonna just take just a minute. My comments will be a little bit more personal. First of all, I love our hometown. We've been here lifelong residents. We grew up in Hamilton. I personally, and I think Rob did too, because we grew up in the same neighborhood, actually didn't know it at the time. But growing up, we were really nurtured by our neighborhoods and our playground system. We walked through our community, even as kids. You know, we were trusted and we felt safe enough, our parents felt we were safe enough to walk in our neighborhoods. And of course, that's changed with every bit of change that has been so good that's happening in our town right now. So it's still our hometown, it's changed, but we still love it. And each of us here love Hamilton, Ohio. This is our place. This is where we live and where we thrive and where our town is really thriving. And I thank each and every one of you for being here tonight, because the reasons that you are here, whether you're mayor, council, city manager, or you're an employee, you're here and you stay because we're unified. When we work together, we can make change and make things happen. And I think that's the synergy that I see happening in our town right now. But one last really sort of minor thing, but this is what happened to me a year and a half ago that made it a lot more personal. It became an urgent situation, and I felt like I needed to stand up and do something about what I had experienced. One day, my life was changed in an instant in our own neighborhood when I was hit by an SUV at the intersection of Northwest Washington and Cleveland Avenue. And I thank God every day that I survived that. I'm still healing from that and the injuries that I incurred that day. I have been a lifetime advocate of active lifestyle. I walk, or I did walk, a lot more through our city. I moved through on a bicycle a lot. I road cycled. I called myself a road cyclist because I was never afraid to be out with traffic in our town. That day changed things for me and the way that I go about things now. But I still love the synergy that's going on in our town. And so it's changed me temporarily, but I now have the opportunity to do something, to be a part of a change for all in the Safe Streets for All, including not just cars, but moving safely, but also pedestrians, cyclists, people out on scooters, people pushing baby strollers, on and on.
Definitely.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. And together we can.
True.
Thank you. Thank you.
Christian, is there a Christian here? Come on up, you gotta give us your full name and your address, please. Are you Christian, sir?
Hello, yeah.
What's your last name?
Christian Matos.
Okay.
My address, 1139 St. Clair, Hamilton, Ohio.
Wait a minute, 1139 St. Clair?
Uh huh, yeah.
How do you spell that last name?
M.A.T.O.S. My name is Jennifer Morald, and I'm gonna help him.
Oh, okay. So you're, you signed the audience of citizens to make council aware of something that's going on that's related to Hamilton. What is that?
Mayor, I think they may be here for a caucus item and...
You know, I thought maybe that you had involved something with a planning commission, is that right?
Yes, we're the planning commission.
Okay, all right.
It's not necessary that you address council and speak, so, but we can...
You know, and let's have the presentation first. And if that doesn't answer your questions, maybe we'll have some time to have you ask council or make council aware of something. But there will be a presentation coming up probably in about 10 minutes or less.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Which caucus item is that? The auto one? That's the auto repair one?
Yeah.
Okay, that's number three on the caucus agenda. Okay. Is Bob still out there?
Yes.
Okay, he got here at 6 o'clock, he just didn't sign the book or something?
Yes, correct.
He knows to sign the book, have him come on in. I mean, accidents happen, but we gotta keep moving on this one. Good evening, Bob.
Good evening.
We gotta sign the book for the record, but if you were out there at 6 o'clock, just please go ahead and tell us kind of what's going on, and we'll go from there.
Good evening, the council and the audience, citizens. Name Bob Harris, 429 South Second Street, president of Second and Fourth Ward. Last time I was here, I spoke about the reach for handicaps being able to push the button. And so I tried to do a little follow-up on that.
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to walk, you know, and look at a few as Mr. Pullman said he was going to do. And the other part that I learned today was that if you say now you're out here trying to cross High Street, the traffic doesn't stop, you can push the button, but if there's, you know, no cars going south and north, then you just, you know, sit there or stand there for 20 minutes or whatever it may be. And I wanted to make sure that I brought that to the attention of council. And when we're checking out those, and I do on Second and High Street, there's a little, what do we call them, flower pot or whatever around there. I come up on that and I'm saying, well, what would I have to do if I was in a wheelchair? I'd have to do a little maneuvering as if I was parking to get to that button without coming out of my chair. So I just wanted to make sure that I brought that, you know, to the attention. One of the other things I want to put on the table is that Southeast is working on doing a 17 neighborhood, 17-strong track event for the summer for the kids. That was one of the major subjects at one of our meetings, where we wanted to talk about getting the kids involved and having awards for the kids where they can come from any one of those 17 neighborhoods and run a race. Nothing that they have to practice for or spend the summer working on. But we talked about that again today, what that would look like, because Cole wanted to submit a grant proposal for that. And I talked with Mrs. Blevins from, you know, the Board of Education, and we'll be contacting her again to see what it's gonna take for us to, you know, rent or use the high school track. So we are working on that. And of course, one of my favorite subjects that we've been talking about tonight is our streets. I want to make sure that we spend that money before a new levy comes along and that we concentrate on making our streets the best streets in Hamilton, and the best streets between Hamilton and Fairfield and any other neighborhood that has better streets than what we have. Potholes are something that we're going to get, and I had my own experience with that. And so we want our streets to be safe, and we want them, you know, to be taken care of. And we want to hold people who are renting and who own houses accountable for cutting their grass and keeping the streets looking good and picking up the paper. Having said that, one last thing, and I'm gonna ask this of the city manager. Today about 3 o'clock, I got a phone call. And the phone call was that ISIS showed up at my daughter's house in Houston, Texas. She was on the phone in a conference. She is an international lawyer, and they did not answer the door. What I've heard, some of the stories, whether true or not, they show up, ask you for documentation, and they have taken that documentation and still taking the people. This is Hamilton, and I want to know what procedures or what one should do if ISIS show up at their door. I've already told the city manager what I'm gonna do if they show up at my door. And so I'm going to comply with not answering the door if that's the case. But if they insist upon coming into my home, my business, then I got a real problem. So I want to know what the city of Hamilton procedure is for that, or whether that's a county thing. We need to talk about that. And I heard the young man that spoke about the water. And he had come to America and got a new life and a new opportunity. America is the place for opportunity, always has been. And so I believe that the law applies to everyone. Doesn't matter whether you're a politician, it applies to everyone. When anyone gets above the law, we are to get involved in that and stop, you know, anything that's not representing each and every individual that's a citizen in this United States.
You asked a question, Bob, and I can't tell you what the answer is exactly. I'm not sure if you were addressing that too.
Well, I said I wanted the city manager to address what one should do if ISIS shows up at Pat Moller's door.
Thank you, Bob. First, it depends, to make sure, you're saying ISIS or ICE?
Yeah, ICE.
Got it.
I call them ISIS, because I just want them one.
Okay.
So again, I knew that you would be the person to ask that question to.
Sure. Well, if they show up the mayor's house, I'm gonna ask the mayor to give me a call. I'm gonna walk him through that. But as you mentioned, certainly you're prerogative in your home or your business to deal with folks how you see fit. Whether you have a conversation where you don't answer the door is certainly, again, something that's of your choosing. So in terms of citywide policy, we don't have a citywide policy. This is something that our residents will certainly address, you know, individually on their own, as they would if any other entity or individual showed up, whether it be the Hamilton Police Department or some other state, local, or federal agency. But I'm happy to have, you know, a conversation, you and I, talk a little bit more about this or more about the scenario with this particular scenario that involves your daughter in Houston, right?
Absolutely. Again, when I say my property, that means when you step on my property, do I have any rights?
Bob, we're getting into an area which is gonna probably be litigated federally, state courts and the like. I'm confident that our Hamilton Police Department will do the right thing, be fair, follow the law. ICE is not within our jurisdiction, that's for sure. I mean, they're not, we can't tell, I can't tell ICE what to do, okay? So I just think that talk to the city manager when you have that particular moment, and we're gonna, you know, what happens, there will probably, there's legal issues, there's all kinds of things, man. There's all kinds of things when it comes to that.
And to be clear, Mayor, there hasn't been any incidents that I'm aware of here in the city of Hamilton, unlike what you described that happened in Texas. But you too, Bob, I'll extend the offer, just like I did with the mayor. If anyone shows up at your door, anyone, you're welcome to give me a call.
Will do. I want to thank you, and I appreciate your time and your consideration, and I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good evening. That's all who I see has signed the book. And I want to thank Bob for raising the issues about our streets and wheelchair and other issues. All right, that's all I've got for, like I said, audience of citizens, we now go to the caucus agenda. That's all, staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, informational report, which is our financial report for January and our investment report. We're gonna go to the committee of the whole, that gives us opportunity to hear from our city professionals about some matters, and we'll be able to ask questions and guess how further direction there should be. I'll set the motion, the regular meeting will be recessed, the committee of the whole will take place.
Tell them.
Second, I wish my council member, Von, second my council member, Ryan, all the favoritists, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, period. The motion is period at 7:11. So we now go to the committee of the whole, and please lead us through that, Mr. City Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our first presentation is by, can't be right, Daniel Tiedemann, City Clerk. All right, excuse me.
Oh, we got rid of him.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of council, Daniel Tiedemann, City Clerk. I've got one item on the caucus agenda to discuss tonight. This is a new liquor permit application for the casual pint that's located at 130 Riverfront Plaza. This is a new D3 liquor permit, which is for the sale and consumption of specifically intoxicating liquor to be consumed on premises. The appropriate city's departments have reviewed this application. This includes building, fire, and health, and there are no objections to this application. As a legislative body, the city council has an opportunity to object or have request a hearing or not object to this application. Staff is requesting that council not object to this, and that is written into the motion that's attached to that caucus report. Do we have any questions about this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just, is this a renew? I mean, they sell intoxicating beverages now, alcohol.
I think their previous licenses were D1, D1s and D2s, but I can follow up with you to answer that question.
That's okay, I just, I was a little confused why, because I know they've been a very successful business there.
Sure.
So they're not adding like bourbon or anything to it? That's not what this is for?
No, that would be what D3 would mean.
That pretty sounds like funding for Sunday sales too, or is...
No, D3, well, for this particular application, this is just a D3 permit. They have had other liquor permit approvals in the past, but this is a new permit.
I don't think it affects the hours either, just a little 1 o'clock.
Councilmember Pullman filled me in.
Well, that's Lauer filled me in on that. I get it now, thank you.
Yeah, it was. Say it a little taller.
Eric doesn't know bourbon.
Okay.
Is that it?
That should take care of it.
All right, thank you.
We'll read about that further if we need to.
Okay. Our next presentation will be by our Director of Project Implementation, Mr. Rich Engel. Our next presentation will be by our Director of Project Implementation, Mr. Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens of Hamilton. We've been working on a project for our Hamilton Enterprise Park Water Distribution System, which is currently served by only one water booster pumping station to site a second water booster pumping station. And we have found a property at 7551 Gateway Avenue, which is perfect for the spot for our purpose on this project. The red and green lines up there represent the different water mains. The red is the lower pressure water main and the green is a higher pressure water main, which is served by the existing Gilmore Booster Pumping Station. By siding our new booster pumping station at this location, we can tap into the lower pressure and also tap into the higher pressure and provide the second reliable source of With that, we would increase the reliability and redundancy for their water distribution system. As I mentioned, it's the best site available. The cost of purchase is $300,000. We are requesting an ordinance for purchase with an emergency, two readings due to our time constraints at the next council meeting in March. And then the total parcel, let me go back to that. The total parcel is approximately four acres in size. We're only going to need less than an acre. So the remaining three acres would be available for development or sale to another developer as we can find. And then with that, this is a rendering of what the new water booster pumping station would look like. The entrance would be across from Waterfowl Drive, the apartment complex to the east, and it'd be a small site paved area with a prepackaged water booster station that we would pre-purchase and place on the site. So we're asking council's permission to move forward with the purchase of this property. Are there any questions?
Questions at all?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for items three through eight will be our Executive Director of Neighborhood Services, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, city council and residents of Hamilton. The first agenda item is for 1,000 Forest Avenue. Highlighted on the screen is the location and they're requesting a conditional use for automotive repair. It currently is a boat manufacturer. He, the person who owns it and operates there, I believe, is moving out of the property and building a new facility for themselves. And so the applicant is asking to move in an automotive repair. This is what the building looks like on the ground. It's next to the railroad tracks and, you know, they have a site plan. We went over through Planning Commission and they amended some things based on feedback on impact for the, because it is their residential area right around there. But there wasn't any objection to the proposal from the neighborhood. Are there any questions on this one?
Is your department satisfied with the revisions that they gave?
Yes.
Okay. Has that been communicated, I think it's been communicated to them already?
Yes, I believe that Ed Wilson has been working with them and they are very easy to work with and they're, you know, going through the building permit process as well and that, you know, they're here, so they're happy to answer any questions, but my understanding is that we're on the same page.
So while this is not a public hearing, is Mr. Christian satisfied with the way things are based upon the presentation by Executive Director? Okay, so there's no need to further speak? Everybody's okay? All right. Thank you. Any questions for Liz? All right.
The next one is 619 Central Avenue and this is actually a city-owned property, but the applicant is Zion's Fire Renewal Ministry and they are also in the audience as well if you have any questions. They own a church across the street, across Chestnut, and they have been in conversation with us for a few years about utilizing these lots and they would like to gravel part of it for parking and then just use the rest of it for like church activities and special events. They are aware that this is, that the plan for this in the, you know, medium to long term, hopefully not long term, hopefully soon, that would, that these would be great location for new housing, the things that we've discussed in the Jefferson neighborhood. This is in the Riverview neighborhood, but this is probably one of the biggest sites that the city owns in that neighborhood. So they understand that it's a temporary agreement that we're discussing a lease and that is why it is a gravel proposal is because the intent is for this to be temporary. Any questions?
You've worked with the pastor, I'm sure he's had questions and I'm sure you gave him answers. Everything's good?
Is everything good? All right.
I just want to thank the city for giving us this opportunity. Just as, good evening, everybody. Just as Ms. Liz said, she'd be very helpful and I just want to extend our appreciation to the city for letting us use that place for, for the interest of the public. We are here to help build up Hamilton City and any help we get is goes a long way to make the life of people we are serving, just like the city is serving, a better place to stay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Do we have to do curb cuts? Are there already curb cuts there?
No, they would access it from the alley. There's an alley right north of the blue area.
Oh, I see. Okay, thanks.
Liz, I can't picture, what is the building to the left of the green? I can't picture where this is.
To the left of the green?
That building, that green?
Well, so this is like just south of Pershing. And what is the name of the, like people call the building that they bought, it was an industrial building that they purchased on Central that people know.
This is just south of the laundromat at.
Hamilton Door.
Okay, all right. I just need a bearing.
Hamilton window doors, old building?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's empty, right?
Nope, they've been in there since, for a few years.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I just want to say Pastor Oliver, thank you for your work in the community. I know that you go up to Bailey Square and pick up garbage every weekend, maybe daily. I know that you are very meticulous about our streets, taking care of them in your facility. So I really appreciate you. You are a good citizen and you are a model for every citizen. Thank you.
Any other questions on this one?
Nope.
The next one is Joyce, it's a proposal at Joyce Park and it's coming from Baden and they're asking for the construction of a storage structure for used sports equipment and it needs a conditional use for this and also some variances to the design of the accessory structure simply because this is just a unique site and with unique needs and frankly, our zoning ordinance just doesn't contemplate it very well. So it did need to go through a process for this, this building and is here for your review if you have any questions. The next one is a zoning text amendment and I think you're going to see a handful of these coming through council in the next few months, but the first one is related to body art and tattoo. And the reason we are working on this is because this has really been an evolving land use that we've had a lot of inquiries about. For example, it's become a trend to see some of our beauty salons wanting to do fine line tattooing as an accessory use and our zoning ordinance doesn't allow it. So it provided an opportunity for us to evaluate our regulations holistically and we are proposing an update today that allows people to apply to do body art and tattoo as a conditional use in more zoning districts that are currently allowed, but it's a conditional use so they be reviewed on a case by case basis. And we updated the conditions of approval to have better language about, you know, a tattoo, body art studio would need to have a good track record with their health code and also with public safety because those are the issues that we, it just, like I said, it gave us a good opportunity to review, not only with other departments, but also we worked with a few people doing tattoos to come up with these for your review. Any questions on these?
Mr. Mayor, Liz, does this require anything more of our health department, like more inspections or anything?
No.
Okay.
No, we would just, we already do when we have a tattoo application, ask the health department for their records, but it formalizes that and says we will consider that as part of the process.
Okay.
And has more specifics about it. So no more work for the health department.
Mr. Mayor, Liz, would, did I read in there correctly that we are looking at possibly expanding the zoning on these as far as different areas?
Yes.
My only hesitation at this time would be, you know, we get into car lots on Route Four and we're inundated with them.
Yeah.
I think at times that can become a hindrance to your business when you have too much competition. I don't want to see, I don't want to see the current ones being hurt by being inundated by other businesses of similar use. And that's just a thought on my mind. I'm sure that you have some answers for that.
Yeah.
Looking into it. And that's not to say I'm against tattoos. My mother is, but I'm not.
It really is an evolving land use. We've had a lot of questions about it lately. We learned a lot through this process. The, like I said, the tattoo, we consulted a number of people through this process and they are supportive of this change to, because right now the regulations allow, are only specifically, I believe, in like two types of zoning districts. And so it's, you know, we have some really interesting, amazing businesses who are interested in doing this type of work and our zoning ordinance doesn't allow it. And the conditional use is the, I think, is what I, it's not, it's not going to be a permitted use anywhere. It's a conditional use everywhere, just like car lot. So it would go, it would be vetted and reviewed on a case by case basis on those things we would look at for public safety and health. It wouldn't just be other businesses in Hamilton, but it would be other businesses anywhere and then also related to the applicant, operators inside, so actually looking at individuals, like who's going to be in there, that would be taken into consideration. So you couldn't just change the name of your business and, you know, say it doesn't, you know, we're not related. So we've tried to find, strike a balance. We really aren't, you know, we think that the conditional use, it, just like our auto sales has allowed us to help automotive sales who are willing to comply with our regulations and invest and make, you know, improve their property. It allows them to do projects without allowing people to store junk vehicles everywhere and make Route Four look unattractive, right? So that's kind of the conditional use process that lets, allows us to vet those things.
Thank you. Thank you for having the conditions of approval to include more detail about their past track record. My list to be safe, my list to be healthy, decisions about the rest of it. Thank you for that.
Any other questions on this one? We also have the Butler County Regional Transit Authority is, has a proposal in front of you tonight. They're out at Hamilton Enterprise Park and they are proposing an expansion to their facility. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but my understanding is that they have really grown as an operation, have a lot more employees, doing a lot more, and they've just really run out of space. And they've also been very savvy about getting grants that have allowed them to expand. So this is, so they're proposing an expansion out here and it's in two phases. And what you're seeing tonight is phase one. And when they are ready for phase two, which they said they think will be around five years from now, they will come back and you will review the details of phase two. Phase one does not have any new buildings associated with it. It is really a expansion of parking on site. Right now they have employees parking on the road and also just way more orderly, more space on their site to park the buses orderly and then also establish an official like training area on site and then add the propane fueling tanks. That is a specific use. So the one thing to note about this first round of review for phase one is even though they're not proposing a building, the whole investment in the layout is, assumes that phase two, when they are building a building, that the garage doors would face Moser Court. And so they're asking for that variance now so that they can know that the circulation of their site will work. But again, the rest of the building will, you know, come back to be reviewed as far as design goes. So this kind of shows a little bit more detail here on phase one. There's new fencing. It kind of shows where the training site is, if you can see all of this. They also are in the audience if you have questions about this one. But we, we went through everything, the way that it's fenced and the berm, it really isn't visible from the residential areas to the south and it's right at the end of the, you know, cul-de-sac and it's an expansion for BCRTA. So Planning Commission recommended approval when they passed it along to you. Do you have any questions about this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Liz, can I go back to six for just a minute? Because I, about the tattoo.
Sure, yeah.
If I remember right, it had like a primary and an accessory. So the accessory means that someone could give tattoos in like a beauty salon or something? So is that a special license?
So everyone that tattoos needs a license from the health department, even if they do it for one day as a special event.
Okay.
And according to our zoning ordinance, if they're doing it more than just one day, like as a special event, they also need a conditional use just to do it as an accessory. But we are proposing that it's allowed as accessory, you know, every zoning district that a salon is allowed, which is a little bit broader than tattoo, what we're proposing as tattoo as a primary use.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
We're good.
BCRTA, any questions? Last one is, we're just requesting your approval to extend our, for extension for our urban renewal area. We need to update it every five years and we need to, we're asking for a little bit more time to do that update, April 2026. Any questions on this one?
Good, thank you.
And lastly, for agenda item number nine from our finance department will be a presentation
Good evening, everyone. So I'm presenting for the fiscal year 2526 Annual Action Plan for HUD funds. The funds that we typically receive are community development block grant funds as well as home funds. The annual action plan is an update that is done annually around this year. We start the process typically in June, July-ish of each year and that process begins with a planning period as well as a feedback and comment period. This year, well, last year, we started and we had our public meetings in August. We also opened up a survey, sorry, I'm going the wrong way. We also opened up a survey and this, this survey was also presented online and remains online until we submit the plan to HUD later this spring. You'll see that we had four meetings, one of which was a technical assistance meeting. And during that, we invite the public, but then also our sub recipients, both those that are past, present, and any future sub recipients to discuss ideas, programs, projects that they're interested in or feel as if the city is in need of and can benefit. interested in or feel as if the city is in need of and can benefit from. Our survey responses so far, some of the top ones have circled around mental health services, drug and substance abuse services, access to affordable and subsidized housing, as well as homeless services and youth centers. To take and comply with community development block grant funds, you have to meet one of the three national criterias here. And then you also have to fall within seven eligible categories. Those categories include, but are not limited to purchase and purchase of property for development projects, public facilities, demolition and clearance, public services, and that can be wide ranging, emergency minor home repairs, economic development, as well as planning and administrative costs. It is anticipated, and I really want to emphasize anticipate, that we will receive $1,298,092 in CDBG funds this upcoming fiscal year. That is subject, subject to change. We have been told by our HUD rep to act as business as usual. And actually just touched base with her today and she said the same thing. We sit on a national call next week and hope that that'll tell us a little bit more and it give us some more information. As it stands, we propose the following projects. You'll see we propose funding for demolition, a couple housing projects through NHSH as well as SELF. We have allocated or plan to allocate funds for Hamilton Road improvements. We have a number of public services ranging from transportation to services for youth, services for seniors, victims advocacy, and also services for abused children. We also have an economic development proposed. And this year is, we're also proposing funds for the DAP program, Design Assistance Program. As it relates to home, we're kind of focusing on the Jefferson Avenue. So you'll see the project here for neighborhood housing services and then our typical CHODO funds, administrative costs, and things of that nature. That slide should say City Council, but it is anticipated that we will take in, per City Council's approval, we will take and submit this to HUD. We are not allowed to submit prior to HUD, literally sending us an email saying that we are allowed to now submit. So we hope that that'll be this spring. But again, we are on standby.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor. Yes, please.
Thank you. The public safety cap, 15%, is that HUD's recommendation or the rule or is that what?
15% is HUD's rule.
Okay.
Here. Public services.
Oh, yeah. Public services. Okay.
Yeah, that's HUD's rule.
That's a cap on all the monies.
That's a cap on public services. Yes, just public services. Now you can allocate funds to like economic development or public facilities. You just can't go over 15% in public services.
Okay. That's, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Other questions? Good. All right, that takes care of the caucus agenda. I'll set the motion, may the hall be closed?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion is carried at 7:37. I'll set the motion to a later meeting and be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
It's at 7:38. Set the motion, well, I'll set the motion this time, all of the reports.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Motion that with the exception of the items, so noting, council received the reports, has set agenda and concur in their recommendations.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. That particular motion is carried at 7:38. I'll set the motion pertaining to legislative items.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to it, prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second. Vice Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. That motion is carried at 7:38. Now go to pending legislation, agenda item number 10, ordinance involving a Dorana Hybrid Area Tiff.
An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property within the city for the Dorana Hybrid Incorporated expansion project to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to H.O.R. revised code, section 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expanded, authorizing the execution and delivery of a school compensation agreement with the Hamilton City School District, and authorizing school compensation agreement, sorry, school compensation payments pursuant to the school compensation agreement, second reading.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion on this one? None. Roll call, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Or it's adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 11, checking review of ordinance involving the Tiff here at the VA Clinic Project.
An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property within the city for the VA Clinic Project to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, taxation pursuant to H.O.R. revised code, section 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, authorizing the execution and delivery of a school compensation agreement with Hamilton City School District, and authorizing school compensation payments pursuant to the school compensation agreement, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion or comments on this one? Roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Or it's adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 12, ordinance involving the classification of registered environmental health specialists in training.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's Classification Compensation Plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2024-12-117, adopted December 13th, 2024, as amended from time to time to establish the classification of registered environmental health specialist in training, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
Would you like to make a motion that the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Vice Councilmember Lauer, second by Councilmember Fear. Comments on this one? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Or it's adopted. Seven zero.
New legislation, agenda item number 13, checking review of an ordinance involving the Development Fee Waiver Pilot Program.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by enacting Chapter 1313 Development Fee Waiver Pilot Program, Part 13 Building Code, to incentivize the construction of new owner occupied housing units consistent with the housing needs of the City of Hamilton, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Second reading of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by enacting Chapter 1313 Development Fee Waiver Pilot Program of Part 13 Building Code, to incentivize the construction of new owner occupied housing units consistent with the housing needs of the City of Hamilton, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Vice Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion on this one? None. Roll call, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Or it's adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 14, two review of an ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, first of two readings.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that. Motion, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Second reading of that ordinance, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, second reading.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Comments, discussion on this one? Roll call vote, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Or it's adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 15, first reading of an ordinance involving right of way, Arbor Springs.
An ordinance dedicating 7,800 square feet of property as right of way located at 1036 Arbor Springs Drive, part lot number 30075, First Ward, North Side, Hamilton, Ohio. Alyssa Miller, Agaro Investments applicant, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 16, first reading of an ordinance involving a right of way, London Road at West Fairway Drive.
An ordinance dedicating 1,527 square feet of street as right of way located on New London Road at West Fairway Drive, First Ward, South Side, Hamilton, Ohio. City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Here we go to agenda item number 17, resolution involving the filing of a loan application, Ohio EPA.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a loan application with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency's Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, program to fund the plants, HVAC design, central boiler elimination project, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to receive said loan funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Discussion on the resolution? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 18, which is a resolution involving the Ohio Department of Transportation Safe Routes to Schools Grant Program.
A resolution authorizing, directing, and supporting the filing, supporting the grant application to the Ohio Department of Transportation Safe Routes School Program for infilling sidewalks and installing ADA compliant curb ramps, crosswalks, and retaining wall along Eden Avenue for Hamilton High School and Wilson Middle School's safety and accessibility, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to receive said grant funds.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Fear. Any comments on this one? I just want to thank everybody in the city who's pursuing these dollars for pedestrian, uh, pedestrian safety project. Another comment? Roll call vote, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Abstained.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted, six to zero with one abstention.
Go to agenda item number 19, please.
A resolution appointing the members and chair of the City of Hamilton, Ohio's 2025 Charter Review Commission.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Comments on this one?
Mr. Mayor. There was one name that was misspelled. The last name was Cross. Did that get corrected? It was spelled C-R-O-S-S-A-S in the list. I believe that was an error.
Is it on the actual resolution itself?
Yeah, I didn't.
It was in the list of names when I went to it and looked at the list of names. So I might just want to check it.
Sure, could check that. Correct it. If it's, however, it's cleared over into the resolution from the list. I mean, I didn't check the resolution. Word for word.
Neither.
So, so we know how to spell her name. It's Cross. That's who we're talking about.
Spelled it wrong.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so that will be corrected. So there's no further need to amend the spelling, I guess. Is that correct, Madam Law Director?
No.
Okay, we know who it is. Any other comments? Like, there is no other? Roll call vote, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven zero.
Honesty to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, once again, just acknowledge, congratulate, and thank John Bowie for 33 years of dedicated service to, to our community and city and an incredible journey that he's had. And thank you for sharing that with us tonight. That's all.
Honesty to the city council.
Mr. Mayor.
House Member Ryan.
Our director of infrastructure and utility, our assistant director of operations, so Edwin Portman, Bill Hudson, all of us were at the APP Legislative Rally with AMP and OMEA this week in DC. We had some great meetings. We were able to talk with Senator Marino and Senator Houston. Fortunately, Congressman Davidson was called to the Speaker's office when our meeting was scheduled. So we had a meeting with his staff, which was, which was, was very good. So just want to say thank you to Bill and Edwin for their leadership. They are very well respected out there, especially with the AMP community. So we are very lucky to have them and really appreciate them taking time to fight for our utilities and keep our teams together. I also wanted to bring up the railroad issue. I think the timing was absolutely perfect. When we were meeting with Warren Davidson's staff member, this is when the emails and the phone calls were coming in about Laurel Avenue being blocked. So we were able to segue into that. And Congressman Davidson actually submitted a bill last month, House Bill 9248, which addresses blocked crossings, returning local control back to the state. So I know we're working on it and I know Laurel Avenue is, is very convenient, but our federal legislators are working on something. So hopefully we'll get some good action out of them here in the next couple of months. Thank you.
If I keep tabs on that, anyone else wish to say anything?
Mr. Mayor.
House Member Lauer.
Mr. Mohler and myself attended the State of the Schools this past week. What a great event. We have great opportunities for education in Hamilton, Ohio. We are quite fortunate in the relationships that we have built with Hamilton City Schools, Baden, Butler Tech, and now Marshall. Man, it is a strong piece of our community. Where in the past it was looked at as there was a little bit of tension. I think that the city staff and our, in our Hamilton City School District has done a great job working together. It is to be absolutely committed. I appreciate all their support on economic development. I want to wish Mr. Hol, we already wished Mr. Holbrook a happy retirement. He's done a great job with some things as far as our report card is way improved, which helps our city. Finishing in the top number one in almost 20 categories for similar districts, he's made a great impact. But looking towards the future, as Andrea Evans begins to take on her journey, I am excited about her philosophy and her pathway forward, working with the city and getting more involved in the neighborhoods. I think that, I want to wish her the best. I really truly believe that she's going to do a great job.
Definitely second that. I think our town is second to none when it comes to all levels of education, whether the elementary school, middle school, high school, regional campuses, Butler Tech, Career Tech. I mean, it's, I think we are truly second to none. If you get a chance to watch that State of the Schools on TV Hamilton, and I think you'll be very proud of the level of education that we have in our city. Anyone else? Just want to congratulate someone else who retired. Henry Sargent, United States Marine Corps, retired, Tom McCaughan.